Considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired for any of the items in the consent agenda, the item may be removed from the agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request. Are there any requests to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Okay, included in the consent agenda this evening are the minutes of the August 22 regular monthly board meeting, payment of the August 2023 bills, including payroll and benefits, and the blanket voucher bills. Also, the surplus library materials to be withdrawn from the collection for August, which accounts for 2,766 items. With those items in the consent agenda, I'll hear a motion for approval.
I shall do.
Thank you, Eric. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say hi. Hi, great. We have now speedily moved right up to Sharon Grant, who will be doing a presentation about summer learning.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, I don't think Marwan got to read the missions.
Oh, we'll come back. Thank you.
Am I standing close enough to the mic? Excellent. Well, thank you all for inviting me to speak tonight. It's great to talk to the board and to leadership team, especially about things that I'm really excited about. And I know it's kind of funny, on a day like today, to talk about summer. That's what we're going to do. So I'm just gonna give you a brief presentation on the summer learning program this year. I also provided a report that details a lot of the numbers and things around the program as well, so please take a look at that. And at the end, if you have any questions, we can address those. So lots of thank yous with this program to go around, but where I'm going to start is with Nell Ramsey, the librarian at the Manchester Library, because not only did she bring her beautiful sons to be our cover models for the summer learning program, she also kind of connected with community members. We have Terry in Clayton and their chickens joined us in promoting summer learning. Because as you know, the theme this year was dig into summer, and I think we can honestly say that we did that this year. So summer learning is a lot of stuff. It's a lot of booklets, it's a lot of prizes, it's a lot of shirts and things, and it's often easy to get lost in the shuffle. So where I'd like to start always is just kind of centering us in what are we trying to accomplish each year, and what are our goals? And these goals have been pretty stable for the last several years or so. So we're really aiming with this program, we want to engage community, we want to bring them into the library, we want to go out to them, we want to share all the wonderful things about the library. We also, because we're a library, we want to encourage reading, because, you know, reading is fundamental with libraries. And finally, we want to support learning. So, you know, how do we go about this? So, you know, we've gone through a journey over the last several years or so, and I just want to say, like, it's exciting to see how we're coming back from the pandemic, how we're growing each year. And in one way this year that I feel like we really moved forward was engaging community and outreach for kind of our large, community-wide festivals. So, you know, it wasn't on purpose that Jason is in two or three of these photos. He was really by our side all summer long, engaging in this program. But we were at the Juneteenth Festival, we were at Pride, and we were at the Islander Festival. These weren't the only places we were, but these were definitely high points, I think, over the summer, and really giving us the opportunity to connect with different communities Also, we engaged community through our library events. We really saw a large increase in our performer programs this year. Last year, we just did a handful, we were dipping our toes back in the water. Do we really want 200 people coming together in a venue? And this year, we just dove in and we went from a handful of events to about 14, and we had about 2,800 attendees for these programs. And these are just kind of our big performer events. I should say, we're probably in the 500 to 600 number, in the number of programs in the thousands for the overall number of our programs we do during the summer. But it was really great to see all of these really fun performer programs come back. And in our survey, which I'll talk a little bit about later, people kind of really noticed that, and we're excited to see those things come back. We had music from West Africa, we had tyco drumming, Brazil, Polynesia, and we had the ever-popular Jeff Evans, magician extraordinaire. He always brings 200 or 300 people to an event. He really engages young audiences around magic and STEM topics. And so this picture that you see right here is a picture that he took at one of our events this summer. Another way we seek to engage is by offering multiple ways to participate, and also doing a lot of school outreach. So we distribute about 17,000 booklets to our elementary schools throughout the county. And we also offered the booklet in paper, in English and Spanish, and also an online tracker. So we're really trying different ways to reach out to our community and connect with them with the tools that will work for them. So our next goal is to encourage reading and learning. And so the way we kind of go about this is through learning challenges throughout the summer. We offer a reading challenge, we encourage people to read 10, 50, or 100 hours, as many as you can read. And then if you read 10 hours, we offer a free book of your choice for youth, teens, and adults. And, you know, we also offer a journal, just in case you want to write your own book. And additionally, we have a bingo activity where we really encourage people to kind of use resources in the library to get out into their community and to read. And then finally, our other challenges, we have what we call a learning challenge, where people can set a goal and tell us about their experience. So through these combination of activities, we're aiming to encourage reading and learning over the summertime in fun ways. So where did this lead us this year? So in the report, I have lots of numbers, but I just want to highlight a couple of them this evening. So this year, over 7,000 people completed the 10-hour reading challenge, which does put us back to the number that we had in 2019, which was really exciting to see. So people really dug in, and, no pun intended, maybe a little bit, and got reading with us. And this picture here is a picture of the die-cut board at Bainbridge Island. So when people came in, probably more children than adults, but they could fill out a B with their name and then put a star on it for each 10 hours of reading they did. And we had two of these boards, and they've completely filled up. So it was really fun to celebrate them along their journey. So I'm really happy to see all those numbers. And we did increase both the number of children, teen, and adult readers, which is also kind of exciting to see. And over 1,500 people finished a learning activity, whether that be bingo or the learning challenge, and a lot of people did both. And so this picture up here is from one of those learning challenges. You know, you had big goals, medium goals, small goals. This individual wanted to learn a cartwheel over the summer. But also, I thought they kind of encapsulated what I read across, you know, the 1,000 or so entries that I read, was that getting engaged in a learning activity made them want more, they wanted to practice more, they wanted to continue with their learning that they just started with this summer. So that's really exciting to see. And we did, you know, this program involves a lot of feedback and input, both from staff and from the community. So we do do an end-of-year survey for patrons and staff. So we got about 163 responses from our community this year, which is really great. And I thought, I really liked this quote, because at the end of the day, this is what I would kind of hope for our summer learning program. That this program is a gem, and offers the most rewards for reading of any summer reading program I participated in. And thank you for being welcoming to grownups as well as kids. Because we're really aiming to not necessarily create just adult tracks of learning either summer, teen tracks or kids' tracks, we're really trying to do a cross-generational program that kind of brings people together, so they can participate as a group and kind of use that energy to fuel their goals. Because a goal that you keep yourself often doesn't get accomplished, you got to share. And like I said, there's lots of thank yous to go around in my report, I was a little bit more detailed about, because there's just so many thank yous. But in general, the staff, our community, the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation and Friends groups are just critical to making this program happen each year. So it's just a wonderful thing that we're able to do for our community, and I'm very honored to be a part of it every year. So thank you.
Questions or comments for Sharon? I think this was one of the first years, maybe last year, but to have the adult component, you always think about summer reading programs as being something you do for kids, so that they don't lose ground over the summer. But to really see the number of adults that actually participate is pretty phenomenal.
Yeah, and I loved, you know, I saw quotes about, you know, gosh, this, you know, allowed us to work as a household together on these activities was kind of neat.
Did you see, Sharon, can you think about a project where maybe a family, intergenerational members of the family work together on a learning project that stuck out to you?
I think there were a number of them. A number of families kind of read together and pushed themselves to kind of reach those 100-hour goals. And so I think that was one example that I can think of off the top of my head.
Yeah, good. Fun. Any other questions or comments?
I was just gonna say, I was willing to bet that you actually had a long, long participants that reported. I know that I read a lot all summer long, and I didn't remember good after reporting, so I'm guilty of it too, but I just, it's wonderful to see all the participation.
I was just gonna share similarly, I just really appreciate all the effort in the summer reading program. This is my second year participating, and just personally, I kind of make the excuse that I don't have a lot of time for recreational reading, and now I'm making that more of a priority. So I make it a game with my daughter, and maybe I'll get to 100 one year and earn the shirt, but I'll keep trying. But I never really thought about reading during the summer, so I really appreciate them.
Sharon, I got a question. What's the most rewarding part for you, just as a person who plans and helps facilitate? Like, what gives you the greatest joy in kind of seeing the final program, you know, develop?
My favorite part is everything.
That's an acceptable answer, thank you.
And what I mean by that is like, just seeing it all come together, you know, the performers, the outreach, you know, all of the creative work that's done at all of our locations. You know, we start with a theme, and there can be lots of the different threads on where people take it, and, you know, how it in general just, like, serves as a catalyst for good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's good to see you outside of the Bainbridge branch every once in a while. I was most interested in seeing this number, the number of participants by challenge and year, you know, going from 2019 to 2023. The 100-hour readers, you know, dropped in 2020 due to COVID. But it didn't drop nearly as severely as the 10-hour readers. I assume it's because the 100-hour readers are more familiar with the program, maybe just kind of, the library's more part of their regular, everyday lifestyle. And seeing that the 100-hour readers kind of went back to 2019 numbers last year, and the 10-hour readers' numbers surpassed 2019. So I'm wondering if there's anything that you need in future years to make this even more impactful, increase, you know, turn those 10-hour readers into 100-hour readers and bring in more 10-hour readers? What would you need in order to expand the program?
You know, I think what has been nice with this program and kind of working with the similar group of people is, you know, we're iterating every year. And, you know, we are provided time and resources to kind of iterate and grow each year. And so I think, you know, the foundation is very generous with how they fund this program, and any, you know, like, and often flexible if new ideas come to the surface. So, you know, I think we got the right group, the right resources, and the flexibility to change up when we need to. And there was a lot of changing up in 2020. We were ready, we were ready to run the program, and then everything shut down. But I think through creativity, through all the different groups, we came up with something that we were able to do during that time. And so I think keeping open, keeping working, listening is all important to growing this program.
Thank you. Marwan, I'm going to give you a brief warning, I was reminded by my colleagues to the left that we skipped over the reading of the mission statement, so do you want to work your way back to the first of the agenda for that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Inspiring our community to dream more, learn more, do more, and be more.
Thank you. With that, I'll take reports from my colleagues, from reports from board members.
I didn't attend the barbecue, I missed that, but I did do the retreat. I got quite a bit out of that, I think, the strategic, planning for strategic vision for '24 through '29. I hadn't participated in that sort of thing before, and I think it's really, it was really worthwhile. And I look forward to seeing what the staff do on Staff Day.
Yeah, I can go next. I also attended the strategy session. It was great to collaborate, really nice facilitation job by Jeannie, and lots of partnership with Mike and Shannon, and it was great to be able to collaborate and discuss the overall vision separately. As part of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, we had our board meeting, made a lot of progress, which Wendy will cover some of that later today, and also got a lot of, took a lot of steps forward with the Port Orchard Capital Campaign, which has been pretty exciting to get moving forward.
Any other?
I think most of us were involved in the strategic planning session in the retreat with the staff. It was, it's just always great to be able to spend that extra time to kind of learn more about, with the staff, and to learn more about the underpinnings of the activity, and to really work through what the challenges are as we go forward. So just want to thank, there's been a commitment to do that as a team between the board and the leadership team, to spend some time together, learning more just about different issues that are present today in support of the library. So it's always well done, well supported, and a worthwhile way to spend our time.
Next, we have the Finance Committee report, Eric.
Yes, and also going back to the strategy session, Dan was there too, forgot to mention him. He was on the other side of the room, so I had to rebuild that other, the other side of the room in my head. So for the Finance Committee, our current financial health is strong, projecting well, no major concerns. We also discussed methods for 2024 budget projection, getting ready for next year to ensure we're in good financial shape and can weather economic uncertainties. And things are looking good, and onward and upward.
Thank you, Eric. I'm going to turn now to Dan for the financial report, and if there's any questions for Dan afterwards.
Well, I'm letting my report stand as is, I really couldn't come up with anything special to talk about this month.
Everybody loves a really good, boring financial report.
It'll put you right to sleep.
Perfect. Thank you, Dan. Jason, the library director's report, please.
Yeah, good evening again. Excellent report from Sharon, and that's where I really want to start with summer. As you heard, it was a really successful summer, full of 100-hour readers and 20 and 10-hour readers, and educational entertaining programs, some of which I was able to attend, prize giveaways. I just really want to thank again Sharon for all the work she does. She's really valuable for our team here. And obviously, our marketing communications, public services teams, IT, CTS, and all the patrons who really make this a seminal program for the library. You know, staff supported those three large programs that Sharon mentioned, that being Juneteenth, Pride Fest, and Islander Fest. And we have really seen the market increase in community engagement. As Sharon stated, by design largely, because, you know, a couple of years removed from COVID, our intention is to re-emerge ourselves into the community. But really, you know, that underscores, you know, the acceptance that our community has of the library, that folks are coming out to programs, and our librarians and associates and assistants and other staff are getting out into the community. And so overall, we've seen a sharp increase in program attendance, about 140% collectively over all of our nine locations. And that's through system-wide outreach programs, we're up 100%. And this is through July of last year, of this year compared to July of last year. And so engaging our community, obviously, you know, is critical for building those connections. You know, it's about building, we have connections, but it's always about building the new connections to the library, because, you know, from birth, we need to attract the next group of users. And so early childhood programs will always be critical, but just being out and being the face of the community and signing folks up for library cards, it's really been, you know, refreshing to see how well the community engaged in all three of those festivals. And so library outreach and public engagement, as we know, and we've underscored and talked about, even we were the strategic plan, are really critical pathways for the library, and will be prominently featured in our strategy. And so my own community engagement work continues, as you know, my reports reflect that. And just in August, I met with, it was a busy month, I would say, I've picked back up to probably surpassing numbers of where I was last year. But just because there, you know, there are people who want to meet, and there are people whom I have wanted to meet to really just continue to try to figure out the fabric of this county and how the library can continue to do what it does, and how we can connect with more institutions and more people that we need to connect with. So alone in August, I connected with the mayors of Paulsboro, Bremerton, and Bainbridge, as well as former mayor Kerry Bozeman, who's now on the board at the Port of Bremerton. Then I also met with key leadership at the Port of Bremerton during August, as well as the CEO and president of the YMCA of Pearson Kitsap County, and the superintendent, new superintendent of the Bremerton School District. And then I also attended a post-COVID Museums and Libraries Panel about change that was put on by the Paulsboro Historical Society. And so August, we also continued our training efforts through our Human Resources Department, and really the focus was topics such as active threat training, which is formerly known as active shooter training, an HR roundtable around how to communicate change, which is, as you know, been rife throughout the organization this year. We've, you know, been involved in lots of change, so it's really important to, you know, have, you know, topical discussions around change and how that can be, you know, communicated to frontline staff from our mid-level managers. So we've invested a lot in training that group this year, and we will continue to do that. And then we've also did a payroll presentation regarding our new payroll process, which will begin in October. As you know, we're moving from bi-weekly pay, from bi-monthly pay to bi-weekly pay. Bi-weekly pay will result in more predictable pay cycles occurring every other Friday, and overall, a smoother payroll process for our payroll teams. And then we celebrated two library employees last month for Star of the Month, and those were Patty Pearson, who's a library associate at the Little Boston branch. She sold herself to be a team player, and she eagerly agreed to assist Kingston branch in addition to Little Boston branch for designated site support needs, and she's proved to be resourceful in assisting with programs. And our other Star of the Month is custodian John Eschen, and John takes great care intact in making sure that his assigned locations are properly stocked with supplies, facilities work, tickets are initiated in a timely manner, and he's especially adept at communicating facilities issues to his superiors and to staff, and just really going the extra mile. And so we congratulate John and Patty on a job well done. And then facilities news, as you know, the downtown Bremerton branch is still closed and will be closed through November possibly for HVAC work. Mike, do we have any updated timelines on downtown Bremerton?
I don't actually, I'm hoping that it will not be all the way through November. I was in the building, what's today, Tuesday? I was in the building yesterday. And while there was no work going on at the time, the contractor is making visible, obvious, good progress. So I will meet with Chris Motter from the city of Bremerton later this week to get an update as to where their contractor feels they are in their, you know, kind of a progress report in terms of percentage completion, and which will allow us a timing to get our contractor in there to do the rewiring and low-voltage work that we need to do prior to opening. So between Chris and I, we are optimistic that we are close to the original timeline, which would be the end of October. Knowing the way construction just tends to go, I would say that we could be beyond the end of October into November, but hopefully not all the way through.
Thanks, Mike. And finally, mark your calendars, because October 19th, speaking of October, is our annual All Staff Day, which will be at the Marvin Williams Center, and all locations of the Kitsap Regional Library will be closed on the 19th, as staff will be engaging in a day of learning, inspiration, fun, and celebrations for all of our staff, and we hope to see you, our trustees, at All Staff Day. And that's the end of my report. Any questions?
Any questions for Jason?
Question that I have is, when the Martin Luther King Branch does open up, is there going to be any fanfare around that? I know a lot of people miss having their local library accessible.
I'm gonna kick it over to my deputy director of public services. Not to put her totally on the spot, we are in conversations with our leadership in thinking of activities that would be nice to welcome staff back. But did you have anything else to add, Shannon?
I was just gonna say, yes, definitely. And we'll probably be reaching out to you and other downtown patrons to kind of think about fun ideas, definitely engage staff, but we're really excited to make it a party. This will be a big deal.
I'm all in. I think what she meant to say is downtown Bremerton's super fans, which is what you are, and other patrons who, you know, are really fond of that location and are really loyal to the staff there. So we'll keep everybody posted. I'm sure we'll have some updates as we get closer to an actual opening date. We'll keep you posted. Thanks. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah, just one comment, just looking at, you know, this list of activities that you took part in in August, just kudos to you again for setting the example. You know, these are all things that don't necessarily fit within the nine to five of your job. I know that, you know, this is early mornings, this is nights, this is weekends. And I'm just very, always very impressed with your enthusiasm and your dedication to leading by example, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Well, I'd like to commend you on your reporting, what you do, because I come from Seattle, and we never knew what the library director was doing, no idea. We never saw him, he didn't, anyway. So it's great that you tell us what you've been doing, and, yeah.
Yeah, the transparency's nice, not only what you're doing, but I often feel, not that we know everything staff's doing, but I think you do a great job of highlighting, you know, general activities that are occurring. The library outreach is phenomenal, I was thinking about our conversation even at the retreat, in that we often have spoken about our community as if it's one community, and I think what's really been different for me in my time on the library board is recognition that increasingly through this outreach and the programming, that the library's doing a great job, and dedicated to the reality that it's really lots of communities, it's lots of It's lots of geography, it's a lot of different communities, and that's really started to be reflected in the programming and where you are. And that takes not only a lot of your time, but it takes a lot of time from all the staff to make that happen. But it's clearly paying off. And I was thinking, twice this week, I've had people say to me, hey, I, I met the library director. So those connections are important. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving along the agenda, we have no correspondence and we have no old business to cover this evening, but we do have an item or a couple items of new business, including a resolution 2023-03, which really is a follow-up to activity that occurred at the board meeting last month related to approving an updated library policy regarding fees. This particular resolution grants amnesty of Unique Management Services referral fee for collection of outstanding materials on patrons' records. Jason, do you want to offer any more comment on this resolution?
Yes, so last month, as you stated, we passed a resolution to revise our fee schedule to be consistent with best practices for equity and accessibility of library services and materials. So in the revised fee schedule, we eliminated the fees associated with the collection service, Unique Management Services, or UMS. And so essentially what that was, was a $15 fee levied for, essentially it was a referral fee of referring those delinquent materials over to UMS. And so that $15 fee was attached to patron accounts. And so the library is now fine-free, as you know, and has been fine-free. And whereas fines have been purged from all accounts that were delinquent when the library eliminated fines, the $15 UMS referral fee remains. And, and so that $15 referral fee in part was from previous patrons before we were fine-free and subsequent patrons, because as you know, we don't have fines, but we do have, we do charge for materials that are either lost, damaged, or not returned. And so we charge essentially for the replacement cost of those materials. And after a length of time of not getting those back, they will be referred on to UMS, which will then, we will pass over that $15 fee. And so as such, we're seeking to eliminate these referral fees altogether. We're asking the Board of Trustees to grant amnesty for the $15 referral fee, still outstanding on those patron accounts. Also, this represents a pretty minimal number that is likely uncollectible, I'll told it, I think about $140,000. And this is likely money, as I said, the library will never be able to collect. So this doesn't mean that we won't still collect money for lost, damage, or materials that aren't returned, it just means that we won't be referring over to UMS and then charging the collection fee associated with those services. Any questions that we can answer for you? Any clarification?
If not, we'll take a motion to approve the resolution. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions on the resolution? Given that, all in favor of approving the motion to approve Resolution 2023-03, granting amnesty of Unique Management Services referral fee for collection of outstanding materials on patrons' records, say aye. Aye. Thank you. That was a mouthful. And our next item of new business is to hear an update around an updated memorandum of agreement between the Kitsap Regional Library and the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation. It's Jason or Wendy starting here?
Yeah, I can just open it up and pass it over to Wendy. So as you know, we've, have a relationship with the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation and a memorandum of agreement with the foundation for how the foundation is to support the library. And so we've been really working with the foundation since I've gotten here to simplify all sorts of things with the foundation. But in terms of how the library is supported by our partner, the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, so before we had multiple pathways of receiving financial support from the foundation, essentially for our three staple programs to the library, one Book One Community and Summer Learning Challenge, in addition to the support for other initiatives, one-time staff support for initiatives not already funded by the taxpayers. So simplifying this formula for giving to the library, the pathway will be a lot more straightforward. I really want to applaud Wendy and her team for restructuring, retooling, and really planning the foundation's future, not only with this MOA, but with, you know, processes and procedures with the foundation in general, and really developing a clear, sustainable funding model for the foundation for years to come. And so, you know, it's a template that I think will be easy to follow by, not only us, but, you know, we have a responsibility to the organization to set up, you know, straightforward pathways that are easy to follow for our successors. So this is about operations now, but it's also about succession planning. If we're not involved in a business of succession planning, then we're not being, you know, we're not being good leaders for our organization. So that's what this really does. You know, I always want to create processes that if somebody were to come along after me without asking anybody, how is this done, they'd be able to see how that is done. And so Wendy, you want to take us forward and talk to us about what we've done here?
Yes, thank you, Jason. So really, as we started a now third campaign, our, our third campaign in 10 years, the foundation board acknowledged that it was time to really look at the funding agreement as Jason was talking about there, really working on a way that streamlines that process for the foundation to provide funding to the library, as well as the memorandum of agreement, which hadn't been updated since its original inception in 2012, I think. So it was, it was kind of time. And as the board proposed those updates to the MOA, they really looked at taking into account the evolution and the evolving role of philanthropy and fundraising and advancing the library's mission, current library policy, active library policy related to fundraising, and the established practices of the partnership that were not currently reflected in the agreement. And the agreement acknowledges that while the function of fundraising is delegated to the foundation, the work of creating a culture of philanthropy is fundamentally intertwined. And both the library and foundation acknowledge the relationship is evolving into a model that integrates philanthropy as essential to library operations. And the MOA now becomes an important guiding document confirming our collaboration remains integrated and aligned as we work together to secure the financial resources needed for the library's continued success. So there's a summary of the changes in board docs that give more detail of those changes specifically to the MOA. But that was a nice little summary of what the MOA now describes in terms of that partnership, and I'm happy to take questions.
This was, this was part of the discussion with the strategic plan, so we did have a chance to kind of look at these materials more closely at the education session. But it really, it really does highlight the evolution of the foundation and the evolution of the library as well in terms of recognition of philanthropy's not just for the, it's not just extra, it is truly essential, it's truly essential to, to supporting a library that can meet the demands of the community. So it's nice to see this. I don't know, Eric, do you want to make any comments from the board, foundation board's perspective?
Yeah, well, I think Wendy said it perfectly, but I also think, you know, as we talked about the, the evolution of the relationship between the library and the foundation and the importance of the foundation in the success of the library, I think what, you know, some folks might not realize, and it's the same with schools, is that there are certain things that are necessary for us to be successful that are not considered essential items. And, you know, we had this great presentation here from Sharon about summer reading. All these programs are, you know, supported, you know, some of these programs are, are supported through the foundation. So these are all things that make the library whole. And I think that, like, for example, when you look at schools, like, I think, I think Washington, there are things about like, that were necessary during COVID for, for, for learning, like, you know, like technology. We're in the middle of, you know, one of the, one of the greatest technological areas in the world and like computers aren't, aren't considered essential. So I think this is, this, this covers the gap and bridges the gap and provides a lot of, a lot of programs and things that aren't necessarily by definition essential to, you know, to others, but are essential to us and where we are. So, so yeah, Wendy said it perfectly.
So we, we're not taking action on this item tonight. This is really something between the foundation and, and Jason, so it's not really ours, but we did want to bring it forward and, and just make it visible to the community and, and to support the endeavors around, we're talking about private philanthropy here, but as we talked earlier, just in terms of the absolute essential nature of engaging our community to really be in partnership with Kitsap Regional Library to make it, to make it what it is. So it's all part of it. Any final comments? With that, we've gotten down to our housekeeping item, which would be to note our next regular board meeting on October 27th, preceded by a Strategic and Long Range Planning Committee. Of course, trustees, if you haven't completed what we need to complete for Jason in terms of the All Staff Play Day, please do that. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting.